Yes, I do.
When it's kind of hard for you to come out here though, you don't see very many people wearing suits or what do you want to bring up?
We're just trying to get my girl.
It doesn't want to get you in the middle of this.
Yeah, it's like when we part with like a hundred people on the sidewalk or look at us. I know what you're doing here.
Great job. Oh my God, people are loving it.
I know, isn't she great?
Uh, somebody else. Just to cover that you were taking out the cell phone. Not having to go outside. It's okay.
Lucy, you can wait here.
You're not supposed to.
Yes, I know.
Okay, okay.
I didn't know it was scary.
Yeah, it's very important.
But they told me you were funny. They tried, they just don't find.
If she can.
I'm over by the bathroom. Probably will be.
Yeah, I love.
Yeah, I'll grab a beer and I'll be used to my days. A good cheer.
Really, right?
Yeah, of course I can think of it. Listen, Dad, I'm going to run.
No.
Hey, you were coming, you probably would have stayed in the car. No.
I have recorded five minutes of you checking in.
Flag of British Columbia. I'm not really worried about that. I mean.
Well, I was considering that. It's a long way to go. Uh, according to reports, they're next to you. And you understand what's a more frustrating distraction. They know when they're trying to. Why don't they keep it a long, better than buying in my.
I'm going to go to the beach today.
We will get some. We have good, I know, high grade technology.
Well, whatever else. You're a boyfriend. Yeah, yeah. No one gets bullied, right? Yeah, we know that. Yeah, but they say.
Friends most. Oh, yes, sure. We all.
I'm trying to go down. Stay below. Is your family in this?
Well, yeah. I can't hear you. Yeah, it's aggressive. I know my daughter.
That's. Because I got it. I got it. She knows.
What are you doing? Come on here. Yeah, these one.
The dog is playing after. The dog is waiting. Yeah, he was playing. He was looking. Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to.
Yeah. I got to know.
What are you trying to do? Yeah, about turn off.
Not to make the plan.
Yeah, it's on top of this. I work just now. They're going to buy you.
Okay, okay.
They want to drive.
They are.
We just got.
Yeah. I mean, okay, okay.
So. Okay, we're going to get our meeting started. Whoops. There we go. There you go. Thanks, everybody. Welcome to a real live zoning board meeting. I guess back, uh, as opposed to dialing in on Zoom. So tonight, um, we'd like to get started with Cindy if you could do roll call on our agenda. That's item number one for us.
Well.
Here.
Vasek.
Here.
Ursus.
Here.
Andreazer.
Here.
Bons is not here to dispute. And newer is also dispute and level.
All right. And so we have a corner. Okay, um, item number two on agenda change. Brian, you want to explain a little bit of the agenda change on this?
Yeah, just for the benefit of the audience, uh, we do have a closed session on the agenda tonight, which is item number six, which is ask for public comments. So just to run through this quickly, they've done the roll call. Um, I'm speaking right now under item number two, agenda changes. We're going to approve the previous minutes. So get the public comments. That's a chance for you all to speak. There'll be another chance for you to make public comments for the end of the agenda on agenda item number seven. Uh, but between that, we're going to ask you to leave. You don't have to go home, but you can't stay in this room. Uh, so I'll show you out or I will shut the door. Uh, they're going to deliberate a closed session, um, and then they're going to reconvene back into an open session. So just want to give you a heads up on that. Um, that's just the process. So other than that, Chair, I don't think there's any particular agenda changes that are coming from staff. I don't know if the rest of your board have any consideration.
Anyone else? Cindy, Zach?
I'm not.
Okay. So now that we're here, I guess we can do, we don't have to have a roll, right? We can actually say all the members of, uh, no changes to the agenda as presented. Uh, favor by six and five, I say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda is approved. Um, next, number three is the approval of the minutes from our, uh, last meeting, which was.
This was the one that I put in there because I had a question on the.
Yes. Right. Um. Our last meeting was July twenty-sixth, right? This is July, well, fourteen, fourteen.
July fourteen, the other one was June twenty-sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I hear us, I hear us. This is July, I got it. Okay. Um, where we also had the issue with, uh, both issues for advocacy, applications, work for three, Park Street, and also, uh, eight four part. Um, and has there, uh, anyone have any, any, um, had a chance to a little bit to look at it? If you use more time, let me know. It's a one and a half figure here that Cindy brought in to us. And we were all present at this, at this meeting, so we would all be able to vote on this. Jim, you were, yeah, you were online, I forgot that. Got to remember who, you know, who was doing it. So, um, does anyone have any changes? I've read it through, I didn't have any changes personally. Anyone else have any changes to this? Seven minutes. July fourteen. Okay. Um, I'll start, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes that submitted through the July fourteen, twenty twenty one, zoning board field meeting. And over a second, two seconds, five seconds. And we still don't have, we can go now, we can't, we might get into this vote. So all in favor, six, five, I said aye, aye.
Aye.
All right. So minutes have been approved. So. Okay. Uh, that moves us along to July of number four on our, our, uh, agenda, which falls under public, public comment. And, um, so tonight, uh, if you, in the audience, you would like to speak on, on a public issue, you're always likely to do so, we do request that you stand at the podium, state your name, address, if you would, uh, clearly for the record, and let us know what you have to say. You're limited to five minutes. So anyone want to be number one?
I'm scared of it. I've been going to these meetings regarding this topic for five, six years. Seeing the same faces up here, couple new faces, and Jane under Blue's dog is up. I live across the river. And last, late last autumn, I was coming back from Alvin and I saw that fence. And I thought, oh my gosh, someone's going to get birthday. Child turned one up. I don't like to say this, but whoever approved that fence being built there eight feet high, I don't think they know this side of the river. You know, we're basically two towns. I had to go through the others to get my mail and saw the town. I live across the river. And I'm hoping too often, the people living in town, they know what's going on over there. The traffic that we have to put up with. A fence. And now, the same thing, bathrooms and things like that, they were all pretty turned up. I got through that and it was a long. I think to say it, some people just feel like they can get what they want just by suing. I want to say the same thing I said Monday night. We know we're going to get sued. And we're gonna, it got turned down by the Florida for Alvin, and I'm hoping we'll have the same thing again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? If I can.
Um, I think it was the deal for, I did that seven fourteen Park Street on the neighborhood of Jamie. And first I agree with everything that Jamie said.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I also have problems, and I also have the feeling that the west side of Sogacott is ignored. Uh, the road is terrible. This is not a problem, I was so lost, I was nothing to be. Bill, we fixed it. We had the pothole fixed, was Ryan's point, we had no police over there. Four hundred thousand cars went along that street last year for season. No police, no sidewalk, uh, got a pothole from the horizon, stuck up a plate, got his fix for us over there. But my, is my comment is not on that, that I just come. Uh, my comment is on the structure of this meeting. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the hundreds of thousands of people who have called into this meeting and it being held on Zoom. The last two meetings were held on Zoom. They were, to say the least, not all that successful. Uh, most people put their time into listening to it, and if this is going to be somewhat the last meeting for this thing, I think they deserve a chance to hear what the discussion is. Now, I know from listening to the conference, uh, the Zoom meeting for the council meeting on Monday, the speakers do not work. I, I gave up on the call after fifteen minutes, but I don't think having it here and getting rid of the Zoom meeting is the way that should be done. I think you should have gone back to the Zoom meeting, which is what all the other calls were done on, and forget the conference, and come back to the conference when the speakers were. But there's a lot, of course, you can't go over to the park, you can't, because I'm here and I'm the owner here, but it's difficult to do that. So I think we should have disrupted the Zoom meeting and not had a meeting in here. I don't think this is the time to switch that, that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Anne Broker, and I'm at five oh eight Park Street. And, uh, I just wanted to, first of all, thank the ZBA for, uh, the really fantastic work that I think you've done on this issue. It's really, seems like a very complicated matter, and I think you've been very dedicated and thorough over the past two meetings, and I'm fully confident that that will continue tonight. Uh, the one thing that I just wanted to mention is that I think it would be very helpful for the public to understand, uh, this evening or at future meetings, conclusively, one of the city views the fence, uh, or structure that was erected next to the chain ferry as a screen or a fence under the city code. Uh, and then the city does include the screen under the code, and it can be six feet tall in a solid work construction. So essentially the same fence, if they're not, it could be lower. Uh, I think it would be very helpful to understand how and when the city reached that conclusion. Uh, so thank you for your time, and I hope you have a very productive meeting.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else?
I don't know. I'm not very good at public speaking. Uh, I'm Megan Hopkins, I'm from four four fourth Park Street. Um, and I said I'm very good at public speaking, so I, I drawn a whole bunch of notes down in the chair, and I don't know if they're going to make sense in the order which I wrote them. Um, basically, I agree with everything that I've already said before. Um, safety, that probably shows the number one on my list here. Um, safety is a huge concern. I'm a preschool science teacher, go on fourteen years, so safety is always at the forefront of my mind. And I'm living directly across from the chain ferry. I know how congested it is, especially during the peak season. Like, I walk that way every day with my daughter. Uh, my sisters are kind of eight, they're eighteen, and I'm terrified for her. I started walking and he's trying to cross the road over there. Um, and I'll bring my sister, it's a very congested, very crowded area. Which is cool, because obviously we love dogs, we want people to visit here and want people to feel comfortable biking and running and walking, and there may be seven miles Park Street, but it would be a concern. Um, I think about the children, the families coming off the ferry, how we have, I call it a wall, it's more of a wall than something, in my opinion, but if you're coming off the ferry, and I've done this, that's why the wall was constructed, you can't see the traffic coming. So if I'm going off the ferry, going backwards to your cottage, I can't see the, I can't see the traffic. It completely blocks my view. Luckily, I live there, so I know we have to stop and like, really, can you see the traffic coming towards us? But a lot of the parents don't know that, like, I don't care if they know. Um, the same thing, I drive that road to get home, and driving that road towards the ferry on Park Street, I can't see people coming off the ferry. I know enough to like, slow down and know that there could be a family or children like that off the ferry, but people who come from out of town might not know that. So it's just for people driving, not being looking at the families, and families not being looking at the cars. Um, that's a huge concern I've got. Um, what else, what I already said on here? My other concern being the psychos, again, I have a permit, and I'm a little tolerant, and I feel like everyone should be held accountable to the same rules and expectations, such as, again, I'm a teacher, so that's how I feel. Uh, but the other issue I have is really like the history of the area. I didn't come up here, Ursus, I'm two months old, I'm thirty-six, and I love Sogacott, and I love the history and the charm and the atmosphere and the culture of it. And I think like, the ferry is a huge part of that history. Like, he was painting those up in our times before I was born, of the ferry. And, and he was like, James Brad, I think his paintings, those of the ferry and the river. I think that part of the river is one of the most beautiful sections of it, and I just know that wall obstructs the beauty of that area. And to me, that's a shame. I don't see artists sitting across the, with the park drawing a painting of the wall, you know, like they used to do of the ferry. And, I don't know, to me, the tree really means something, and I think lots of that. I, I know, that's still the example, my mom and I were just, you know, at the nine eleven memorial, and we were walking along, you could see like the skyline, you could see the World Trade Center building. And I was thinking about all that, like, things that married people, they're historical, you know, it's a little wall in front of them, like, you want to broadcast that to visitors and to people who live here. And I just feel that completely destroyed the, the view of the very important historical feature of our town. And I disagree with that, but it's the only chain ferry. I just found out how I think of this, Jen, right? Yeah, she just told me that recently. In the entire United States, the only fucking chain ferry like that ever existed, ten thirty-eight, it's been here. To me, that means something. And I don't think it should be, you know, blocked or obstructed. Um, and that's really, I mean, I mean, I care greatly about history and nature, and I think Sogacott is the most beautiful town, and I've traveled many a lot, and I still come back and think, man, Sogacott is very, but I know of these other places like that. I just want you to continue to maintain that charm.
All right. Thank you.
Right here, love. I'll be up there a lot. I should have been happy for five, eight, four, five, four, five, three. And, uh, I really just don't have much else to say. Everything she says is what we talked about and agree with. Um, I'm just curious, because so many people have talked about the wall and said, well, it shouldn't be in there, it shouldn't be there in the first place because he didn't have a permit to do it. So we're kind of wondering, all of our neighbors, why wasn't it ever taken down? If you don't have a permit, you can't build something, and it was built, but then weeks and months go by, we're just very curious as to why it's still there. We're really hoping it will be taken now, not just shortened, because for everything that Megan and Jane and Anne and everybody else says, it's the biggest thing about it is a safety hazard, not just a danger. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Johnson, next three by nine Park Street. Uh, thank you all for the work you do, you truly do appreciate it. Um, my family and I have lived there for almost twenty-three years now. So as a mom, like everyone else, um, safety is a huge issue that we understand. Um, traffic there, capital ruin, doing now, um, there's a lot of business down there. That fence is an obstruction and it's a safety hazard. Um, as a landscape architect, um, the fence is wrong. It's, 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 the design is atrocious, um, simply because it is a barrier. It's almost as if people are seeing things that age out of there, and it's not talked about. Um, and also, it didn't get a permit, and it's got high regulations. So I don't know why it's there, um, I think we need to resolve this. But, um, again, we appreciate the work you guys are doing, you women are, men and women are doing, and, um, we hope you listen to us. Thank you.
Thanks, group. Uh, wait, I'm sorry, you don't find it. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Holly Lindy, and I live at four thirty Vine Street. And it just dawned on me that I have a photograph on my phone from the morning of Saturday, June nineteenth. It was a little bit after nine o'clock, and a crossroads tour bus pulled up with a group of visitors. There were actually two buses that morning. And I, as much as I don't want to, I really want to show you this, because here were tourists coming to see the chain ferry. And I think this picture, which I should have copied for you, tells the story. There was nothing for them to see. Um, if you wouldn't object, I guess, but I could pass my phone around for you to prove that for just a minute, because it's unfair to those folks who made the journey and didn't have the opportunity to see something that's.
Do you want us to make a busy, visual?
May I?
Uh, want your, get loud, pour it around the world, and then you're going to have it in your school, but then hold it. Well, like, how are you going to put it out when you find the news?
Your location.
Okay. If anybody in the public would like to see that.
Yeah, Holly, tell them. So here's a, you're on the phone. Yeah. Oh, God. I'm looking for Ben and I, too, we're here on a shore, we've got to see the fence instead of the chain ferry. I know you guys have been over there, but that's what was going on. Yeah.
Is that stink? I couldn't have done it, I said, thank you.
Thanks for saving a thousand words on that. All right. Uh, next, does anyone who hasn't spoken would like to speak?
Good evening, Matt Summerlin, I'm here on behalf of the applicant that's spoken before, uh, on this issue. And I'm not going to repeat everything I said at the June meeting, but just respond to a few of the comments. And, uh, we provided you this photograph. And I've mentioned at the June meeting that the uniqueness of this property, I think everyone would acknowledge that, and I've mentioned that there are really only two other parcels in the entire city that have the same issue that the applicant does. One is on the other side of the chain ferry on the west side, and one is on the east side, that's what this photo shows, is the other private property, it takes it to the chain ferry on the east side. And as you can see, it has a privacy screen on both sides of the building. Now, I don't want to get into the history of that, but I've heard a lot of people in these public meetings talk about, why does the applicant want to have a privacy screen? It's not necessary, this is Sogacott, we're all friendly. Well, again, the picture's worth a thousand words, and some people like the privacy, and the chain ferry generates a lot of foot traffic, and a lot of people waiting for it to come, and, um, I just thought it was appropriate to show you that. Now, at your last meeting, you approved the variance for one eighty-four Park Street, send your minutes that you approved tonight. I just want to quickly run through the rationale that you followed in granting that variance. It was a ten foot variance for the front yard. As you know, we're asking for a variance for the front yard setback for the structure that we're requesting. Item number one was the topography of the site will make strip compliance difficult. Fifty percent of the lot is unbuildable. The property is truly unique. The exact same rationale can be made on our application. Our lot's truly unique. It's hard to build on. Fifty percent of the lot is unbuildable, probably more than fifty percent of our lot is unbuildable because it's underwater. You say, uh, house of any size would need a variance. Well, any structure on our lot requires a variance because the setbacks overlap. There's absolutely no above water level that can contain a structural defect. Number two, justice for the owner and others. I, I suggest, looking at that photo, justice would be allow the applicant to have what the, the other similar property already has. Number three, very unique area. Well, this is the exact same area, it's just down a little bit, same road, same area. And then, number four, the constraints are defined by Eagle. And the topography of the lot, not the owner, uh, we have the same constraints from Eagle here. We can't build in the water, we can't build over the water, because we'd have to have Eagle permits. And we were denied those Eagle permits. So we have those exact same constraints of what you, uh, use to justify a, a variance for a front yard at, at your last meeting. Now, a number of people tonight, and at the prior meetings, have said, hey, there's been no permit for this fence. How did it never get allowed? Well, I already talked about this, but I'll mention it again. The city entered into an agreement with the applicant that allowed the applicant to put that fence in. And in exchange, the applicant agreed to do something to help the congestion and the traffic and the safety hazards that might exist at the end of the chain ferry. In fact, my client is as concerned as anybody here about safety. In fact, when my client got special land. In fact, when my client got special land use approval, one of the conditions that it voluntarily agreed to on all that property on the other side of the road, was it donated an easement so that people could walk down to the beach and not have to be on the road? Because we all know, there's no shoulder, there's no place, and it was terribly unsafe for all these people getting off the chain ferry and going down the beach. My client donated an easement so that it would be safer. And then, my client and the city got together earlier this year to see what could be done to make it even more safe. One of the problems was the traffic and the speed of traffic. City said it would like to have one of those signs that shows people how fast they're going. That cost double thousand dollars. One of the things that the city liked was, was a, a lane so that the people getting off the chain ferry could walk across the road. That would cost money. And they wanted to swap some properties so that it would be easier to have a sidewalk to get to that crosswalk, to get to the easement. And my client agreed to do all of that, spent four thousand dollars, gave the city a thousand dollars, so the city could pay its attorney to draft the agreement. There's an agreement that's been signed by the city, that's what allows my client to put the fence up. It's not even a fence, it's a privacy screen, privacy screen doesn't need your approval, we're willing to lower it to six feet. Um, and I think that's a fair compromise for something that we're allowed to have. Uh, I'll be providing a legal brief on the enforceability of that agreement, uh, to Ryan tomorrow. Um, but as I've maintained all along, and as I've shared with your prior attorney, it is an enforceable document, it's a contract signed by the city, reliable upon my client. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else that hasn't spoke that would like to speak yet?
Can I speak about that?
Yeah, I'm asking for anybody else that has.
All of them.
That would like to speak. Okay. Um, I'll give you one minute.
Okay.
That's it. I appreciate it, we're not gonna go back and forth.
Um, I just want to speak about the east side of the chain ferry. The only similarity is it's connected by the city body of water. The east side of the chain ferry does not have a parson sitting beside it, the traffic whizzing on by. I came over it one day today, you have a parson inside it, and if there's any screening, and if someone's ringing the people at the ship in shore, the pool, that's no danger to anyone. This one is a threat, danger. And last meeting I heard, the council tried to say, when people said it was congested, turn that into an argument for them. He said that it's congested, and that's why the people in the dock need to screen this, to not be subjected to the congestion. Or don't the people coming off the chain ferry have greater rights? The people sitting in the boats to have a right privacy? And this is just not, the whole thing isn't the best. If a safety hazard, I would care if they have a permit, that would just mean we'd be arguing with you instead of them arguing with you, because they can't say it that.
Okay, thanks. All right. You appear from.
Bob, can I say one thing? One last?
Are you gonna stand up again?
Yes, I will. Will I be too?
No, you can say it anywhere you want.
Okay, um, I taught government as a history teacher, and governments have to have rules and regulations and ordinances. And I believe we have some here in Sagatuck. And however that fence was approved to be built, I have serious doubts whether we follow our ordinances. And I don't know why people on boats need so much privacy. I've walked around huge medley of yachts in the Caribbean, the Mediterranean, Florida. I mean, what are they planning to do on those boats? Romanorians, what are we talking about here? This is getting a little bit ridiculous. They need privacy? Well, I don't know, go hide in the woods.
All right, you know what?
Go ahead, go ahead, come on.
Stand up, stand up, Mr. President. The safety issue, I just forgot this when I was up here before. Could be resolved with signage. If you signage all the time, my client will pay for the signs, so when more people coming off the ferry, staff will listen before you cross the street. Thank you.
So, there is a section under our agenda tonight, uh, number seven, you'll see off of public comments, which is after we go into new business and unfinished business, we come back, we do come back, um, after closed sessions, probably, it's still on the agenda here, uh, and there is another area for that, so just let you know. So, at that point, I am going to close the public comment, uh, item number four on the agenda, and go into new business, which at that time, I would like to have Ryan, uh, ICR City Manager, do an introduction to our legal counsel.
Yeah, certainly. So for the benefit of the audience and the board here, the city council directed me to acquire a new legal counsel after our existing legal counsel resigned. And so tonight, we have with us Chris Patterson, Jake Brady, with Fanny Schultz.
Erzick.
Erzick and Rose. Um, and so we onboarded them two weeks ago, approximately.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, and so they've been doing some quick footwork to get, get up to speed. Um, I think, well, they attended our city council meeting on, on Monday, Jake was able to attend that. Um, and a previous council meeting is Wednesday. Um, so far, I'm very impressed, pleased to have them. So that's the introduction, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right, at that point then, um, under new business, is there any motion? Look for a motion to maybe go with this question that we would have.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, on the agenda, this is a closed session to review legal opinion. Um, Chris, do you think we need some more language to, to recommend to?
Yes, I, Chair, I could.
And I think two point one, we, we did provide actually, if you look on the first page of the documents that we did submit, there is a proposed motion. The other thing that I just want to, to verify to the public, too, in case, because I understand from your earlier sort of comment, the ZBA is not ready for the new business. So, uh, for purposes of closed session, we're out of time, we go in, but it's only for purposes of legal advice, directly with the clients and ZBA, there won't be any decisions made. I just want to be clear that it's only for closed session purposes of transmitting our legal opinion. Obviously, any deliberation or decisions that happen to be made under the first number seven on unfinished, unfinished business would all have to go through outside of that closed session. So that, the public will obviously be invited back and ask at the closed session, assuming that there's a motion, uh, to approve of that. I just wanted to clarify that, otherwise, we did provide a motion, um, that does satisfy some additional legal.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, for a reset, we didn't, but for further clarification, so the board, the board has received the responses to the questions that, that were, uh, were in hand yesterday. So that's one of the reasons for the public not agreeing, that we would like to have a few moments with counsel to review those questions. We had had those for, I guess, whatever, third hour or something like that. Um, so that's the, that's the reason for that. This is the first time we've ever had the chance to do that in late form. Or group, whatever. So, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I hope that, uh, we move into closed session under MCL two six eight, or H, to discuss a confidential written legal opinion from the city's legal counsel regarding the ZBA's legal questions of pending variance requests.
Do I accept this? All in favor? Fifty-five are saying aye. All right.
We should, we should, we should actually do a little call.
Agree of all?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we're supposed to go on service. Oh, yeah. Okay.
The client handles the crowd.
Yeah. Have you been a pro?
Oh, yeah. All right, that was, uh, that was different.